All this meeting in order, if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay, morning, everyone. I'd like to ask, request that someone approve the, for the reading and approval of the minutes.
Motion?
Make a motion?
Second.
Been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. No one? Okay. Okay, we have two proclamations, Proclamation 24-0072. This proclamation is declaring the month of March as colorectal cancer month and March 28th, 2024, as casual day in Lackawanna County. And I'm going to read this proclamation into the record, and then we'll ask Karen Saunders, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute President, to come up to the podium for a few remarks. Whereas colon and rectal cancers are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeastern Pennsylvania, with incidence and mortality rates in some areas as much as 14% and 17% higher than the U.S. average. About 75% of new cases of colon and rectal cancer occur in patients of average risk, and approximately 516 new cases are diagnosed. Nearly 200 patients die from colon cancer each year in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming combined. And whereas, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute has been easing the burden of cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania for over 30 years through community and patient services, hospital and practice support services, and cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet the unique needs of our region. And whereas, on Thursday, March 28th, 2024, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute will sponsor the 21st Annual Casual Day, and that stands for Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives. Whereas, Casual Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle against colon cancer and died in the summer of 2002. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahin, Matt McGloin, and Chris Chirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize March as colorectal cancer month, and urge residents to be screened for early detection of colon cancer, and participate with the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute in its colon cancer awareness efforts, and proclaim March 28th, 2024, as Casual Day in Lackawanna County. And if Karen could come up and say a few words, thank you.
Good morning, thank you for having me. Yes, that's a mouthful, and those numbers are still very high for incidence and mortality rate of, from colon cancer in our region. But the good news is, the numbers are coming down. Since the inception of this program 21 years ago, they have been cut in half, actually, both from our outreach and education at the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute, we've reached thousands of individuals about the importance of this life-saving screening, and we've provided hands-on assistance through our cancer screening navigation program specifically targeted to low-income un- and underinsured in our region, who have many barriers to achieve this, this screening. Some of those are financial, of course, but it's also transportation, lack of awareness, and fear, like many of us have. So, for those in the program, we also cover the cost of screening and cost of diagnostic testing, if it's necessary. I also want to remind everyone that the age for screening, if you are at average risk, is now 45. The spokesperson of our event this year is a vascular surgeon, Dr. Alessandro Smoraldi, who was diagnosed at 47. And so, the age has, that's one of our messages about this campaign, and I just wanted to also say that we look forward to working with the new county Department of Health. Our program has been used as a model across the state, and we have decades of data around cancer incidence and mortality rates, and we look forward to being a partner always. Thank you for recognizing this.
Thank you very much, and Karen, if you'd like to come up, and we'll present you with the proclamation and take a photo. Okay, we have a second proclamation, 24-0073. This proclamation is declaring the week of March 17th to March 23rd, 2024, as Pennsylvania 4-H Week in Lackawanna County. Whereas, 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country, and has helped youth in Lackawanna County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing. And whereas, 4-H in Pennsylvania is delivered by Penn State Cooperative Extension in rural areas, small towns and cities, and all 67 counties of the Commonwealth, to more than 77 youth ages 5 to 18. And whereas, 4-H youth in Pennsylvania are served by a network of staff members and more than 6,000 adult volunteers, who engage in mentor youth and learning activities and hands-on projects in subjects such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness. And whereas, Pennsylvania 4-H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4-H inspires kids to achieve, and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Lackawanna County, who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. 4-H provides opportunities for leadership development, career exploration, problem-solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. And now therefore, we, Bill Gahin, Matt McGloin, and Chris Chirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim March 17th to the 23rd, 2024, as Pennsylvania 4-H Week in Lackawanna County. And here to say a few words on that is Stephen Alessi from the Penn State Extension. Stephen, if you want to come on up to the podium, we appreciate it.
First of all, I would like to thank the Lackawanna County Commissioners for their continued support of Penn State Extension in Lackawanna County, and because of that support, it allows us to do this, our 4-H program in the county, which, like the proclamation had said, it's part of our land grant mission from Penn State University, to be an educational resource for all members of the Commonwealth, and of course, in our case today, Lackawanna County, providing the research-based education that is done out at the College of Agriculture Sciences, and into practical programs into our state today. So I have a couple guests with me as well, and I want to introduce them because they are what helps make the 4-H program in Lackawanna County is what it is today. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Avery Catman, she is a proud 4-H member, and she participates in cooking programs and also sewing programs, and has been a member for two years now, correct?
Like, a little over a year.
About a, yeah, a little over a year, so she's, and looking forward to being continuing the program. We have her mother, Amy Catman, with us today as well, and then we have a member of our Penn State Extension Lackawanna Advisory Council member, Lexi Kelly, who is here supporting the program as well. So thank you to our guests, and again, thank you to the Commissioners for their support of this program. We're very proud of what we do in Lackawanna County. One of the things that we're very proud of is kind of the diversity of programs that our members participate in, you know, we have people doing agriculture products, you know, because Lackawanna does have, you know, a lot of agriculture in part of the county, but then we also work with a lot of different community partners as well, particularly the library system, the school districts, and we have a great program with a partner with our Penn State Master Gardener Program at the Scranton School for the Deaf, that you've probably seen some of the planners in downtown Scranton, those are actually done by 4-H members that are students at the school. So, you know, we want to make an impact in the community, that's what we're here for, and we're thankful that we're able to do that through, through the 4-H program and Penn State Extension. So, thank you again, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you, great job. And if you'd like to come up, I'll, we'll present. Okay, we have another proclamation, no, I'm kidding, no more proclamations here. Okay, Ordinance 24-0055.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is second reading of Ordinance Number 292 of 2024, it's an ordinance creating and establishing the Lackawanna County Film and Multimedia Commission. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners desire to establish a commission to promote and attract motion media production crews to film movies, television programs, commercials, and digital media in Lackawanna County, and offer support so that productions run smoothly and are successful, and now therefore, being enacted or ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, that it is hereby enacted by the Board of the County as follows: The creation of purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to create the Lackawanna County Film and Multimedia Commission, whose goal is to enrich and support the community throughout the promotion of Lackawanna County as a premier filming location with a strong professional network, with unique resources, and contribute to the economic development of the county. The Film and Multimedia Commission will hold public meetings and meet with local government partners and other community stakeholders to discuss and promote motion media productions to film movies, television programs, commercials, and digital media in Lackawanna County, and to offer support so that productions run smoothly and are successful throughout Lackawanna County, provide mechanisms and materials to promote Lackawanna County as a premier filming location, and to seek available sources of funding to realize these goals. The number of members for the Film and Multimedia Commission shall comprise of nine, who shall be appointed by the Comport of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, and the members of the community shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. The Film and Multimedia Commission shall have the following duties: to conduct regular public meetings to gain input and information relevant to the promotion of Lackawanna County as a premier filming location for motion media productions; assess the feasibility of establishing programs, festivals, or other events to promote motion media productions throughout the communities in Lackawanna County; to identify and engage with potential stakeholders and nonprofit organizations to partner with in organizing, planning, and conducting programs, festivals, and other events to promote Lackawanna County as a premier filming location; to build a local database by identifying locations in Lackawanna County to accommodate motion media productions; develop a marketing plan, including the use of digital and social media, to promote Lackawanna County as a premier filming location; engage with local filmmakers and filmmaking groups and art councils to promote and showcase local talent through film festivals and events in Lackawanna County; and to make an annual report to the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners of its progress, findings, and recommendations. This ordinance shall become effective 10 days after adoption. Mr. Chairman, this was spoken about in the last meeting, you may take a vote when you're ready.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve Ordinance 292?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question?
Question, which I think was brought up before, just cost to the county with this program.
Yeah, there's, on the question, I thought we made it pretty clear last week, there is no cost to the county.
There's no cost, yeah.
Correct. Anyone else on the question? Okay, all those in favor of Ordinance 292 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the ordinance passes. Resolution 24-0071.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 3683630-369293, inclusive, totaling $4,602,186.99. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $8,719,427.76. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0071?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Resolution 24-0056.
Approving the Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and authorize the grant submission by the Lackawanna County Emergency Management to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the fiscal year, for the federal fiscal year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement, in the amount of $105,787. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our EMA Director, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning Commissioners.
Thank you, good morning.
The Emergency Management Preparedness Grant is a grant through Pima that reimburses the county up to 50% of the Emergency Management Agency personnel, their salary and benefits.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0056?
Motion.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0057.
Approving the Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the 2024-25 Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant for the Department of Emergency Management, adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20, 2024. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is the Director of the EMA, Mr. Tom Taylor.
The Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant, Preparedness Grant, it supports up to about $15,000 to equipment, equipment maintenance, and supplies and training for the Emergency Management Agency. There's no cost to the county for this grant, and it does take the burden off of the maintenance of the equipment that we do try to keep up to date, so Pima pays, Pima helps pay for that.
Thank you very much, any questions for Mr. Taylor on this one? Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0057?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0058.
Ratifying the Area Agency on Aging Volca Grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby ratify the submission of a grant by the Area Agency on Aging to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the, for the Lackawanna County Victims of Crime Act 23 through 25, in the amount of $139,177. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20, 2024. Here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We are seeking approval to apply for the 2024-2025 Non-Competitive Victims of Crime Act Grant. The amount has actually changed to 132,215. Aging has been awarded this funding annually since 2018. The funding offsets costs towards salary and benefits of our protective services employees working directly with victims. It also offsets costs of services available to older adults in Lackawanna County who are victims of abuse. Those services include housing, transportation, and legal fees. There is no cost to the county, and the funding received from this grant supplements funding we receive from the state to help expand existing aging services.
Thank you very much, any questions for Mrs. McDonald? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0058?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0059.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Amended Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the amended Scholarship Fund Agreement with Lackawanna College, 501 Vine Street in Scranton, to provide post-secondary educational opportunities. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here once again is Director McDonald.
Thank you.
We are seeking approval to amend the Area Agency on Aging Scholarship Fund, a partnership with Lackawanna College, to address the gaps in the aging workforce through education and training. Degree-seeking students benefiting from the scholarship will work directly with Area Agency on Aging clients through an Area Agency on Aging contracted provider. Continuing education and certificate programs for approved Area Agency on Aging employees and community partners will enhance the aging workforce and help build long-lasting community partnerships to support older adults. There's no cost to the county, the funding allocated to this amendment is budgeted state funding that would be returned each fiscal year, if not spent by the Area Agency on Aging. Our budget covers costs of services ordered, which is currently higher than the services delivered.
Thank you very much, any questions for Mrs. McDonald? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0059?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0060.
Ratifying the District Attorney's Volca Grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify the submission of a grant by the District Attorney's Office to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for Lackawanna County Victims of Crime Act 23 through 25, in the amount of $198,368. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the District Attorney's Administrative Officer, Mr. Brian Finerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, the, as Mr. Jeffers indicated, the DA's office is asking the Board to ratify the submission of a grant by the DA's office to Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Volca Grant, Victims of Crime Act, in the amount of $198,368, covering the period 10/124 to 9/30/25.
Thank you very much, any questions for Mr. Finerty? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0060?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0061.
This is entering into a memorandum of understanding with Susquehanna County, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into a memorandum of understanding with Susquehanna County for the Susquehanna County DUI Program Coordinator, agreement to commence immediately and expire April 1st, 2027. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20, 2024. Here to speak upon that, Mr. Chairman, is the Deputy Director of Drug and Alcohol, Mr. Robert Dimmock.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff, I am here to respectfully request your support for our office's memorandum of understanding with Susquehanna County. As of July 1st, the Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs will be managing the DUI program for Susquehanna County. Barbara Durkin will serve as the DUI Coordinator. This memorandum of understanding will allow the department to bill and seek compensation from Susquehanna County in the amount of $500 per month for the management of the program. This will not cost Lackawanna County any money, and will be a simple program to implement.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioners.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0061?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0062.
Awarding the Audit Preparation Services, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the Audit Preparation Services to Susquehanna County and Consulting Solutions Incorporated for the years 24 through 27, as per attached. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Financial Officer of Lackawanna County, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Morning Commissioners. The recommendation to award the contract to Susquehanna County and Consulting Solutions followed a request for proposal process, which resulted in the receipt of three proposals. All were excellent submissions. Susquehanna is being selected because they not only met, but exceeded the proposal criteria. The objective of this contract is to really assist the county staff with the preparation of audit documentation needed to meet our annual September 30th deadline. The timing of the audit release is absolutely critical. Not only does the county have debt covenants, which require a timely release, but a late audit can hinder grant opportunities, and is a requirement for the continuation of our workers' compensation self-funding status. As the Commissioners are aware, we are woefully late with the completion of our 2022 audit. Much of the reason is attributed to staffing changes. The cost of this contract is very reasonable. There's an annual cost of a maximum of $5,000, which is for a lot of the preliminary phases for audit preparation. Anything in Phase 2, which would be outside of a lot of the preliminary tasks for audit preparation, would be billed on an hourly basis. So Phase 1, costs are hourly, maximum Phase 1, $5,000, Phase 2, hourly as well. I think the cost is very reasonable. I expect the cost maybe higher in Year 1, mainly because not only are we looking to assemble a lot of the information for the auditor, but we're also looking at trying to bring staff along to really understand exactly what those tasks are in order to get the audit released on a timely basis.
So the company that we use now for the audit, they can assist in helping your office? Like, why are we hiring another company, when we already have them to do the audit?
Well, keep in mind, the auditor can assist with preparation of material for the actual audit. Basically, you have a firewall there. The auditor really would complete the audit based on the information that's submitted to the auditor. The auditor can't compile that information. Now, the auditor is, has been very helpful, there's no question about it, but you do have a firewall between those tasks. So this is really the reason why. What I've said to the Commissioners before is, remember, you're replacing approximately 70 years of experience with maybe five years. There's a certain amount of training that's going to be required in order to get the staff prepared to do what needs to be done.
Any other questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0062?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0063.
Accepting a proposal for the Information Security Assessment, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from Hinton and Associates, IT Consultant 764 Corporate Circle, New Cumberland, PA, to complete an information security assessment and review of Lackawanna County's current program cost not to exceed $6,750. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again here is CFO, Bolzoni.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the contract with Hinton and Associates really is more a matter of timing. So the Information Technology Department is seeking to update equipment with an approximate cost of about $5 million, which is significant. Much of this equipment is the firewall between the potential for system breaches and a more secure operating environment. Many of our servers are at least eight years old, switches are even older, and they're well beyond their useful life in a secure operating environment. This equipment is critical in maintaining a secure technological environment. The engagement is not comprehensive, but will provide a good review of security protocols and the equipment needed to support those protocols. The evaluation will review policies, procedures, and identify any known deficiencies. We're aware of the common occurrence of system breaches. We read the newspaper recently with regard to the Scranton School District. Breaches also can be very costly. The city of Baltimore paid $18.2 million relative to a security breach a few, a few years ago, and the city of Atlanta paid $17 million as a result of security breaches. This contract cost, which is $6,750, I would consider more of an investment than a cost. Now, this contract is not to be confused with the approval of the equipment request. That matter can be taken up after the fact. The purpose for this was to really try and assemble as much information as we can, so when the actual discussion ensues about the acquisition of equipment, the Commissioners have more than enough information to make a decision.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Thanks, Dave. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0063?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-00- Resolution 24-0064.
So accepting a proposal for digital sound service, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from Digital Sound Service Incorporated, 1513 Division Street, Scranton, for presenter time system in the Commissioner's conference room at a cost of $3,499. Be adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, this is once again adding to the technological advances inside the conference room here to help the audience. This will show them their time clocks and how that, how they resolve itself, not just for our Commissioners' meetings, but for prison board meetings and all public meetings held inside this room.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0064?
Motion.
Is there a second? Second, on the question?
Just on the question, I, $3,035 for a timer, I think that's hiring consultants. The spending is out of control. It's just another $3,500 to keep track. Somebody's cellphone will work fine. I can't agree with that.
So this is $3,499 that I think is going to be very well spent, and let me explain why. So when I was on City Council in Scranton, many times members of the public would come up to the podium, and we used to have like a buzzer that would ring. People would get lost in their thoughts, they would not have any clue how much time they had left. This will be a timer that will go on the side of that wall over there so that the public and the person who's speaking can see how much time they have left, and then it will be a timer that we'll be able to see right underneath the podium. This is much more transparent, and quite frankly, it's much more professional. If you go into any professional meeting space in this country, they have a timer. It's $3,400 and a $160-plus million budget is a drop in the bucket, and it's been budgeted for. So money well spent. We did it when I was on council, and the public especially appreciate it because then they can gather their thoughts in a more efficient manner rather than just have a timer go off and it totally throws them off. So I think this is money well spent.
I'm sure the, I'm sure the people that are owed money right now will be happy that we're buying something else.
Well, Commissioner Chermak was here for four years prior, and that's why we have 1,000 invoices that we still have not paid, so he's.
All run by the Democrats, minority commissioners.
Could be part of the problem, not part of the solution.
You like to tell everybody that you were here, though, Chris. That's the thing, too.
And by the way.
Pick your side. Which side do you want to be on?
And by the way, with all due respect, we walked in, Commissioner Chermak didn't have much to say over the last four years when we had $19 million in unpaid bills, but yet he's up here throwing a fit about $3,400.
Said nothing for four years as we fell deeper and deeper into a dark hole, and now three months into a new administration.
Thank God you guys are here to give us the proud.
I find that, I find that hard to believe.
We'll be in good shape now, folks.
I hope so. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, absolutely.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0065.
This is increasing the members of the Literacy Committee. It's a resolution, the Board of Commissioners is increasing the number of the members of the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee, whereas Lackawanna County is a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas the Board of Commissioners established a literacy committee pursuant to ordinance number 281 on November 2nd, 2022, and whereas the literacy committee created a board consisting of nine members, and whereas the Board of Commissioners desires to increase the size of the board to 13 members to offer opportunity to more, for more involvement with the committee, and then whereas the Board of Commissioners believes it to be in its best interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to increase the number of the board, number of board seats in the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee by four seats. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby resolve the following. One, Section 2.1 of Ordinance Number 281 is amended to increase the number of seats on the board to 13 members to be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Number two, the four new appointees' terms are, one, a committee member, excuse me, shall be appointed for a two-year term, two committee members shall be appointed to a three-year term, and one committee member shall be appointed to a four-year term. Upon expiration of the initial appointed terms, all terms for committee members shall be for a period of four years. Number three, all other provisions of Ordinance Number 281 shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0065?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0066.
Authorizing and assigning the responsibilities of the American Rescue Plan Act, whereas the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law on March 11th, 2021, and included the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, a part of the American Rescue Plan, and delivered $350 billion to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to support their response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas the county is grateful for these federal funds, were made possible to assist the residents of Lackawanna County respond and recover from the negative impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and Lackawanna County's allocation of $40.7 million of the $65.1 billion allocated to counties, and where 10% or 4 million can be allocated towards administrative costs, and whereas in order to design, implement, monitor, and properly report the use of the $40.7 million in federal funds, the county administration has needed to augment its internal capabilities, and such capabilities are currently enhanced through a firm with the county is contracting with for regulatory compliance, and that by designating an ARPA director at the county is necessary to ensure the county does not lean too heavily on consultants, and whereas the ARPA director's work would mirror and possess type of work done by the current Director of Economic Development with respect to directing the county's existing federal, state, and local funding, but would require substantial work to ensure the county expends and commits all $40.7 million in an impactful and compliant manner before the federal deadline, and whereas the county acknowledges that its current Director of Economic Development, Kristin Magnata, possesses capability, experience, and work ethic, and has already demonstrated a willingness to work above and beyond for the county, and under this new arrangement will be expertly, expertly perform the functions of both ARPA director and the Director of Economic Development, to include a $25,000 stipend annually and quarterly installments. Whereas the county reserves the right to amend this resolution or any portion thereof from time to time as it shall deem advisable in the best interest of the promotion of purposes intent on this resolution and the effective administration thereof, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorizing and assigning the Director of Economic Development the responsibilities of the American Rescue Plan Act Director, and will, with the start date of January 2nd, 2024, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this was done previously in our, with our prior Director of Economic Development, and we're just updating it for the new Director of Economic Development.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0066?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0067.
Entering into an agreement with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an agreement for professional services to Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for routine maintenance service for the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail to commence April 1st, 2024 and end March 31st, 2025. The authority will remit to the county the annual sum of $20,000 for services rendered, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Deputy Director of Parks, Mr. Frank Stevens.
Morning, Commissioners. Basically, what you have in front of you is a renewal of an annual agreement that we do with the Heritage Trail. We're members of the Parks Maintenance Crew, goes down and does basic week-to-week stuff along the trail. We basically pick up certain receptacles during the year. From April to October, we trim along the trail, and then in the wintertime, plow a certain part of it and keep up their parking lot. It's been going on for a few years now, it's just a renew.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stevens? Thanks, and I want to thank you for the great job that you've been doing in your position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0067?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0068.
It's the appointment to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors, Kristin A. Magnata, Designee of the Lackawanna County Planning and Economic Development Office, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, to fill an unexpired term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, this is once again, some housework here, the Director of Economic Development is fulfilling the role of the former Director of Economic Development.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0068?
Motion.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0070.
It's your appointments to the Lackawanna-Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna-Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board. Joseph, John Woschinski, 400 Maplewood Drive, Dixon City, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2026. William Burke, 927 Greenfield Road, Moscow, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna-Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board. Sarah McDonald, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, to fill an unexpired term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Kaylee Noon, 618 Carnation Drive, Clark Summit, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2026. Paula McNally, 1132 San Ann Street, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2026. Commissioner Matt McGoyne, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on March 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0070?
Motion.
So it's unclear, am I off this board?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I would be on it, no.
Okay, well.
Second, on the question, all those in favor of the resolution, or the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Motion 24-0069. Motion to award the Lackawanna County North Pocono Trail to Leeward Construction Incorporated, 239 Gulf Hill Road, Honesdale, Pennsylvania, 18431, the lowest and most responsible bidder, and to accept the base bid plus alternate two at a cost of $2,182,996.15. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. On the question, we have our Director of Economic Development, Kristin Magnata, who'd like to say a few words about this project.
Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution, as mentioned, is to award a construction contract to the lowest and most responsible bidder, Leeward Construction, for Phase 1 of the North Pocono Trail, which is projected to be 3.5 miles. This phase of the project will support the work to complete the trail from Elmhurst to Dunmore, and we ask for acceptance of this award.
Thank you. And do you just want to talk for a second about the, the big map that we have on the screen?
Yes, well, we, first of all, we're very excited about this project, and the team has worked hard and for many years on this project. So as in, as you know from the information, that we, the primary funder of this project is DCNR at about 1.38 million, and then the remaining, a little over 800,000 is from our ARPA funds, and for 3.5 miles, the benefits would be health, wellness, and recreation for residents and visitors to Lackawanna County. And we're expecting the construction duration to be approximately nine months, so hoping that it would be completed by the end of 2024. So looking at the map in Elmhurst where there is the why not, not directly across, but just up a little ways, 3.5 miles toward, from Elmhurst to Dunmore, that is the direction that this project would be going, again, 3.5 miles, and it would have trail fencing as well. It's going to be a great project, and again, we're very excited about it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any questions for Mrs. Magnata?
Okay.
Anyone else on the question? I agree, I think this is going to be a great project, and when we first read through the legislation, it was hard to kind of imagine this without looking at, you know, the great graphics and the great maps that we have, but this is going to improve the quality of life, and it's really exciting.
Yes.
So thanks for, thanks for everybody's work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Opportunity for the public to address the board. No? Okay. Commissioner McGoyne, Commissioners, other business?
Uh, yeah, just a few things real quick. Last week, had the incredible opportunity to tour the Gentex facility in Carbondale, really amazed by, by the production process and the dedication to the hard-working employees there, seeing firsthand the manufacturing of equipment for our military. It just highlights the crucial role that those individuals play in ensuring that our armed forces are equipped with, with top-notch gear. So thank you so much to Gentex for that opportunity to visit. Yesterday, Commissioner Gahn and myself had the chance to tour the maternal and family health services facility in Scranton. We were able to, you know, gain valuable insights into the support available for, for families in need. It was a very heartfelt experience to witness the dedication of the staff and the vital services that, that they provide, and I think it's important to remember that Lackawanna County is a caring community, really a big family in a way where we're seeking help is not only accepted, but, but it's encouraged. And lastly, again, Commissioner Gahn and myself had the privilege of attending a press conference focused on the Lackawanna Historical Society's efforts to archive old records from, from newspapers, you know, preserving our rich history for generations to come. The Historical Society's Director, Mary Ann Savakinis, and staff did a wonderful job of collecting over 1,000 boxes of old newspaper archives and items, and I also want to acknowledge Doug Fink, the owner of Pen Paper, for generously providing temporary storage. It was, it's just really inspiring to witness their dedication to ensuring that these stories and events of our past remain accessible, you know, really providing that much-needed link to, to Lackawanna County's history. And real quick, our own Rick Nateri's birthday was yesterday. So if you see Rick, make sure to wish him a happy birthday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Commissioner Chermak?
So Tommy, can you come up for one second? Tommy Taylor? So, you know, I, I know you put hours and hours and hours of work into trying to help get some money for the flood victims. It looks like it's been denied multiple times.
Multiple times.
Any thoughts? What do you think we can do? I mean, these folks are in trouble.
I haven't gained any insight from Pima. They did say there may be some other opportunities for some funding, but they haven't elaborated to me yet. I know I'm receiving emails, they wanted to know how many people that we put through the Multi-Agency Resource Center, which was above 300. We helped 317 individuals during that three-day span with information and supplies that they needed at the time. But other than that, I really don't have any other insight yet from Pima, from the recovery agency of Pima.
Not, not everybody knows the time that you put into that, helping the municipalities and everybody involved, businesses and residents, so, you know, I thank you for all your work. It's very disappointing that we, you know, are shot down.
It wasn't just me, we had my, the whole staff at the 911 Center, the numerous volunteers through the VOADS, the volunteer agencies, the Red Cross. It was, it was good to see the community come together for an event like that. It's just very unfortunate that the denial was, was made by, by FEMA.
Sandy, you have something to add to that?
Well, do you mind if I follow?
No, no.
Um, I apologize for that.
No.
Don't go, don't go anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere.
Um, with that, I have been working with various municipalities as far as guidance on some of these, you know, especially the folks that were very heavily hit with floodwaters. There is an appeal in place for the disaster funds, which I believe that's what you were, yeah. It was, it was originally denied. It's going back under review again as far as an appeal is concerned. However, there is opportunities that are open right now under DCED for a flood mitigation program.
Yeah.
So, that's another possibility, and it's another opportunity that municipalities can look at in addressing some of their flooding mitigation concerns.
Okay, well, so Sandy Worschinski takes care of all the grants here. It's a tremendous help to all the municipalities when they reach out, she's always very helpful, so I'm sure your phone will be ringing, but Tommy, thanks for what you did, and we'll keep fighting and see what we can do.
That's all we can do.
Thanks.
Mr. Commissioner, just to be clear on it, it was Governor Shapiro's appeal to FEMA that was denied yesterday. Actually, it was denied on Friday, and the paperwork came through yesterday, so it wasn't Pima, it was FEMA.
No, right.
Just so everybody is aware of that. Pima really worked hard, and so did EMA also, to work with FEMA, but it didn't work out.
Anything else? Anything else, Commissioner Chirmack?
Nope.
I just have one thing that I want to address, because as I was sitting up here thinking about it, Commissioner Chirmack was opposed to increasing the transparency in the Commissioners' Boardroom with a cost of $3,499. Let me repeat that, $3,499. What I am shocked by is that before we took office on January 2nd, Commissioner Chirmack was part of an administration where there was $19 million in bills that were racked up, and I didn't hear a peep out of him, a peep out of him.
We steered this county through a pandemic, a worldwide pandemic, and I can tell, I don't care if you're speaking, and I can tell you one thing.
Commissioner Chirmack, this is my time to speak.
If this administration was running through the pandemic, we'd be $100 million in debt at the spending that's out of control.
I'll just say this again, there was over 1,000, well over 1,000 invoices when we walked in as county commissioners in January. Commissioner Chirmack, I didn't hear a peep out of him, not a peep, $19 million, but he's going to come up here and whine about $3,499. Unbelievable.
You mentioned consultant, too. What consultant, Chris, were you talking about? What consult...